...part of the melting pot. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
And by the way, that immigration resource guide can be found at lamayor.org/knowyourrights. Well, turning now to how the city handles police investigations. By the end of the year, all LAPD officers are expected to be wearing on-body cameras to record interactions with the public. But should footage be accessible to everyone? And if so, when? The LAPD's civilian bosses are considering and need your input. Gil Reyes reports.
We will make that report available to the public.
L.A. Police Commission President Matthew Johnson takes the controversy surrounding these cameras to the people. We can offer our opinions through early May. The easiest way is online.
It's our mission to get this policy right, and in doing so, we are reaching out to the public to get as much public input on this as possible.
To release or not to release police body cam footage, that is the question, as law enforcement nationwide faces mounting pressure following a string of controversial police shootings and demands for more transparency. Usually, the LAPD does not release the video unless there's a court order. But L.A.'s Police Commission is reconsidering that practice, hiring a group called The Policing Project out of NYU to gather input and help draft new policy.
Recognizing that probably nobody will get exactly what it is they think should be the perfect policy.
It really is a difficult topic to cover. On one hand, releasing footage could improve trust between cops and communities. But on the other hand, releasing footage could hinder or limit ongoing investigations, could only contribute to the confusion of the case, because a lot of the times, this video is not all there is to the story, and could finally be offensive to the families of crime victims, especially if the video is graphic. LAPD Chief Charlie Beck offers his opinion.
I'm still reluctant to release all video all the time. I think that isn't, I don't think that's in anybody's best interest. But again, I think that this, you know, to, for me to prejudge where this is going to go, you know, is, is ill-advised. I think that what all of us want is to get clear input from all of the stakeholders.
Your opinions are needed through May 7th at lapdvideopolICY.org. I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
After findings are presented, commissioners will create a draft measure that will go through another round of public feedback. The commission hopes to have a final policy in place by the end of the year. Over at City Hall, Iranian-Americans celebrated Noor Wooz, which literally means "new day." City leaders also commemorated the new day of the new year. Anna Marcos takes us to the party at City Hall.
Lots of hugs and kisses at the City Hall Rotunda on the happy occasion, as Iranian-Americans ring in Noor Wooz, the Persian New Year with piles of sweets and goodies. But who says you have to be Persian? And you thought the Mexican hat's a good way to celebrate?
Hey, it has the same colors as the Iranian flag.
I'm very, very happy to be here, and I'm proud to be here, and I'm Persian.
Noor Wooz is a springtime festival that celebrates the vernal equinox and new beginnings, so it's a chance for all of us to renew ourselves, recommit to old goals, reconnect with family and friends, and just start over.
Everything starts a new life, and the flowers are blooming.
A special Noor Wooz altar highlights the seven reflections of nature, which includes painted eggs and swimming goldfish.
So you have sabze, which is seeds, which is exactly reflecting nature. There is one, it's called senjed, which is the, which is a fruit of a tree, which is extremely sweet, and that reflects love.
And love is what Iranian-Americans got from city leaders as they issued a special Noor Wooz proclamation at City Hall.
They have truly woven their beautiful culture into the fabric of the city.
We need more now than ever of the importance of that family, of that community, of immigrant contributions. So Noor Wooz Mubarak to this entire community.
This lady spoke no English but gave her blessings for the new year, wishing peace to America.
Persians are among the most educated and prosperous immigrants in America. They are professors, scientists, businessmen, and more.
I cannot be any more prouder. The Persian community have done so well, they are definitely a good, positive force in this society.
And so, Noor Wooz Mubarak to all, whether you are Persian or not. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
Noor Wooz, by the way, is a festival that lasts for days, and celebrations continued throughout the last weekend of March. At LAX, more renovations are underway to bring passengers a better travel experience. Rasha Goel has the latest.
Yana, I'm at LAX where officials held a groundbreaking for a $1.6 billion state-of-the-art five-level facility called the New Midfield Satellite Concourse. Now, this concourse is going to be located just west of the Tom Bradley International Terminal, and is really being created to enhance the passenger experience, and will provide new gates, new shopping and dining experiences. It is designed as an extension of the Tom Bradley International Terminal. The 750,000-square-foot concourse will have L.A.-centric dining and retail options, more airline club space, and help alleviate terminal traffic.
It'll create over 1,000 good-paying jobs for the amazing men and women of our building trades who will do the construction work here. It'll improve our guest experience from curbside to takeoff, and it'll generate $300 million in just the construction and direct wages to the people of Los Angeles who will spend those dollars and recycle them here on our main streets.
We'll have 12 new gates, and two of these gates will be able to accommodate the big Group Six aircraft, the Airbus A380s and the Boeing 747-800s.
Our flight information display systems will have features that allow customized directions to your gate once you scan your boarding pass. Our automated boarding gates will have biometric identification, such as facial geometry, iris scan, and fingerprints. We're building a baggage optimization project alongside the MSC.
The facility is also designed to be eco-friendly.
They're meeting the highest Tier One standards in sustainable construction practices, according to the California Green Building Standards Code.
Midfield Satellite Concourse will be serving both domestic and international flights.
This is a win for Los Angeles, it's a win for our tourism industry, it's a win for every person who walks through these doors as a gateway to the rest of the world.
Believe it or not, officials are anticipating the New Midfield Satellite Concourse to be open and operating by 2019. Reporting from LAX, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
Airport officials say construction of the Midfield Satellite Concourse should not interrupt operations and schedules at other terminals. L.A.'s Chinatown has a gateway, so does historic Filipino town, and soon, Little Armenia will have one too. But selecting the winning design is proving to be difficult, given all the talented submissions. Gil Reyes shows us the final five.
Folks in East Hollywood choose wisely. It's now down to five finalists, but only one can be chosen for this distinct honor, welcoming people to East Hollywood's Little Armenia.
It's been part of the dream of the community to have something representing the Armenian heritage and culture, and our contributions, and our accomplishments, and our involvement, and our presence in this community, and it's, and we're very excited about it.
One of these will become the official gateway to L.A.'s Little Armenia, a section of East Hollywood that includes Barnes-Dole Art Park, Hollyhock House, and the St. Geribet Armenian Apostolic Church. The gateway to be installed at the area's entrance at Hollywood Boulevard and Van Ness, next to the 101 freeway. L.A. is home to one of the largest Armenian-American populations in the country. We asked Area Councilman Mitchell Farrell which designs his favorite.
I'm going to choose not to weigh in on my personal preference, because I want the community process to guide the way forward on what is ultimately selected.
Personally, what do you like the most?
I can't say. I love them all. We want to make sure that this has widespread community participation and, and engagement, because ultimately, this is part of the gift of the city, and so, it's the residents who get to truly be able to weigh in on this.
The winning design is expected to be put in place in about a year. From L.A.'s Little Armenia, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The city has set aside $350,000 to cover expenses for the winning project. The money comes from the city's arts development fee, a trust fund for the arts revived in 2014 by Councilman Mitchell Farrell. Well, once a month on a Thursday night, Angeleno art lovers converge on the downtown Arts District for a smorgasbord of art. Recently, the centerpiece of the art walk took on a decidedly female twist. Anna Marcos takes in the show.
A huge art show, and this one is all female. The downtown Los Angeles Art Walk has become a monthly cultural phenomenon, and this month, the Her Story exhibit takes a look at life and all things artistic from the female point of view.
I wanted to mix kind of the inclusion of abstraction in with it, so that's why their faces all kind of look scratched out, you know, they have these puddles of paint on the top.
We are oftentimes looked over or ignored, so it's really nice to be spotlighted and given a platform to tell our story.
Portraits, abstracts, landscapes, and symbolic work are all part of the mix.
This time, I'm gonna do a live art performance, which include me paint showcasing my calligraphy and paint on five different models with different genders and nationalities.
But calligraphy and abstract headless portraits are just some of the many attractions. Art lovers can visit other galleries, buy things at the art mart and local businesses, take a break at the food trucks, and just get a taste of the downtown L.A. art experience. I'm Anna Marcos for LA This Week.
For more information, visit welikeLA.com. A historic Hollywood mansion gives way to showcasing some of L.A.'s finest decorators. Rasha Goel has more on how this estate is representing Hollywood history.
A classic example of old meets new. Rooms designed with an eclectic array of styles are on display as part of the 2017 Waddles Mansion Designer Showcase. This year's theme: Hollywood History, the New Classics.
Each room is in a specific design and has interesting facets and highlights different designers.
The 1908-built mansion was the original home to Gerdin Waddles, a famous financier who was responsible for bankrolling much of early Hollywood. After Waddles' death in 1932, his wife and son continued to live on the property. The mansion was sold to the city of L.A. in 1965 and currently houses a Hollywood Historical Organization.
What makes it so special and unique is its situation in Los Angeles here, just on the foot of the Hollywood Hills, among so many iconic and historic homes.
I'm in Mr. Waddles' favorite room, the library. Now, he spent a lot of time here. In fact, family time was also spent in here. And though the designer has chosen to bring some contemporary feel and looks to this room now, the family tells me it's still one of their favorite rooms.
Be sure to see the library, that was our family's favorite room, and we all think it's the prettiest room in the house.
What came to mind for you to wanna, you know, mix the old and the new together? How did you go about working this?
Well, actually, that's one of my fortes. I like to marry the old and the new together. So, the library has the bookcases, original to the house, 1908, and so is the ceiling. So I brought in contemporary furniture, contemporary lighting, contemporary accessories, and married the two together.
Not only is it about the inside of the home, but designers also help style the exteriors. Leslie Shapiro Joyal talks about one of the pieces that served as an inspiration for her.
I had the opportunity to meet some of the Waddles relatives last year, and was told how much Gerdin Waddles loved gardens, birds, life, all of that, and I thought, the significance of me finding a sculpture with the little bird is just too good. And I fell in love with her and really sort of designed the room around her.
Every room has its unique character, where they're trying to respect the Waddles Mansion while infusing their vision.
The Waddles Mansion is considered a park, and the parkland areas surrounding it are normally open to the public. In addition, it can be rented out for events. In Hollywood, I'm Rasha Goel for LA This Week.
The Waddles Mansion Showcase runs until April 16th. For more, visit waddlesshowcase.com. While heading over to downtown L.A., where the city's oldest children's theater is set for major renovations. But first, a puppet carnival to welcome a new era for this downtown fixture. Gil Reyes has more from Bob Baker Days.
Handcrafted marionettes come to life to celebrate the life and legacy of their creator, Bob Baker.
He passed away three years ago, but in lieu of his passing, we decided to keep the theater going, and in the spirit and his artistry, we continue everything that he, he built here.
Welcome to Bob Baker Days, a puppet-themed carnival at Bob Baker Marionette Theater in downtown. Built in 1963, it's the oldest puppet theater in the United States. People celebrating all weekend on what would have been Bob Baker's birthday.
He always wanted to make sure that the kids who grew up in his neighborhood always had access to some sort of art function and outreach program.
The theater produces 200 marionette shows a year, and this marks the venue's first event as a nonprofit organization.
I, I just love it. I love it. I love so much that you guys are nonprofit now, sending it to hospitals, yeah.
That's right.
Getting it out there. I love getting people that necessarily wouldn't think to come here to see shows, just getting the word out. I just want you guys to make so much money so that you never go away.
I didn't know that had been here for 50 years. So, my daughter, she's a, she's still getting used to it. I think it's a little bit of a, an adjustment for her, but she really likes the puppets and looking forward to coming back again in the future.
The latest plans are to turn the property into a residential development complex, while still preserving the theater. The theater is an L.A. historic cultural landmark. This designation protects it from demolition, no strings attached. At First and Glendale in downtown, I'm Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
Renovations are expected to begin by the end of the year. While construction is taking place, puppet shows are expected to continue in other venues throughout L.A. A city leaders approve a major renovation plan for downtown L.A. Plans to fill up the Silver Lake Reservoir are moving faster than expected, and the city attorney targets immigration consultants who prey on local families. All these stories in City Beat. The Los Angeles City Council approved a plan to tear down Parker Center, the LAPD's former headquarters, and replace it with an office building for city workers as part of a larger redevelopment plan for the Civic Center area. The Civic Center master plan calls for the construction of 1.2 million square feet of office space, mostly through developments proposed for the Parker Center site and the nearby Los Angeles Mall, a retail area below street level. The master plan also includes 32,000 square feet for cultural space and 45,000 square feet for a new civic plaza, which will be built in six phases over the next 15 years, with the Parker Center site as phase one. Last month, the city council voted against naming Parker Center a historic cultural monument, despite the Cultural Heritage Commission recommending the move. LADWP officials confirmed that surplus water from the snowpack runoff from the eastern Sierra region will be made available to refill Silver Lake Reservoir ahead of schedule. Utilizing this water source, the refill of Silver Lake Reservoir will begin in mid-April and take approximately two months. This option replaces the originally planned May refill of the reservoir using local water resources that would have taken approximately 12 months. LADWP emptied Silver Lake Reservoir in late 2015 to allow for the construction of the Silver Lake Reservoir Complex Bypass Project, part of LADWP's compliance efforts to address updated state and federal drinking water quality regulations. City Attorney Mike Fuer announced a multi-agency collaboration to educate the public on immigration consultants and to crack down on those who misrepresent the services they may provide under the law. As part of this effort, the city attorney supports legislation proposed by City Councilwoman Nuri Martinez to establish a permitting and enforcement system for immigration consultants. Martinez said requiring immigration consultants to be licensed will provide a resource of legitimate consultants for people to access and give the city the tools necessary to prevent more people from being victimized. Support a group of young actors as they perform their student-written play at La Plaza de la Raza, enjoy a film festival from Indian filmmakers, and learn how to live green during an Earth Day celebration. All this and this week's things to do. For the first time in About Productions' history, comes the debut of a full-length student-written play, Eyewitness, a story of courage and hope inspired by the lives of significant Chicano elders told through the voices of today's youth. Produced as part of the Chicano Legacy Project, which aims to enrich the public's knowledge of the rich history of the '60s and '70s Chicano movement and provide youth with a transformative educational experience, in the play, these main characters are guided by the jaguar, a spirit animal, as they search for purpose and gain the courage to stand and effect change. Come watch the play on April 8th at 2:00 p.m. at Lincoln Park. For more information, visit aboutpd.org. The Indian Film Festival of Los Angeles is a nonprofit organization devoted to a greater appreciation of Indian cinema and culture by showcasing films, supporting emerging filmmakers, and promoting the diverse perspectives of the Indian culture. Each year, the festival features a rich mix of film programs designed to build and support the growing interest in the Indian entertainment industry. This includes programming that cultivates an audience for Indian films while supporting filmmakers of Indian descent in career development as they navigate the larger studio system in Hollywood. The Indian Film Festival takes place April 5th through the 9th at Weagle L.A. Live. For more, visit indianfilmfestival.org. Come out and celebrate Earth Day with a fun family celebration at the Tarzana Recreation Center. There'll be lots of family-friendly activities, live music, local food vendors and trucks, and kids' painting. You'll also get a few tips on how to live green. It all takes place on Saturday, April 8th at 5655 Van Alden Avenue in Tarzana. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at LA This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
Property theft has spiked in the area the past year due to easy access for thieves. Almost 80% of car theft occurs because of unlocked doors. Locking your doors takes a matter of seconds and can become so routine that you may forget whether you locked your doors or not. But it's worth the effort to double-check. The more successful thieves are at taking items out of a car, the more chances they're going to come back to that area. Don't let our town be that area. One simple precaution is to hide or cover any valuable items when leaving your car unattended. Simple actions like these can prevent you from becoming a victim of property theft. The Los Angeles Police Department would like you to remember, lock it or lose it.
Need a recycling center? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall. Illegally parked cars? Call 311, the toll-free number for non-emergency services. 311, your one call to City Hall.
Good morning. Want to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. The public is welcome. Madam Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call a roll, please?
Bloomfield, Bonin, Buscino, Sadio, Englander, Harris, Dawson, Weezer, Corretz, Krikorian, Martinez, Ofero, Price, Rue, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Ms. Martinez moves, and Mr. Bloomfield seconds. Next?
Mandatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Price moves, and Mr. Bonin seconds. That brings us where?
Mr. President, today is Tuesday and time for the flag salute.
If I can ask all arise. Ms. Martinez, would you lead us today in our flag salute?
I would love to. Please rise, put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez. Let's go through the agenda, Madam Clerk.
Mr. President, there are requests to continue Items 1L and 1M to May 2nd.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered. Continue.
Items 1 through 3 are items noted for public hearing.
Okay, do we have cards on these items?
Yes, there are cards on all three items.
All right, then, continue. One second. Mr. Bonin. Item 1B, if we could continue that for 30 days, that would be May 3rd. We are continuing that item based on the request of Mr. Bonin. Mr. Rue, did you want to say something? Mr. Rue.
1L, if we could continue for 30 days as well.
1L, we will continue as well till May 3rd. Okay, continue.
Mr. President, Items 4 through 18 are items for which public hearings have been held. For Item 18, the Budget and Finance Committee report has been posted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, thank you. Members, specials? Why don't we vote on these items, then? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Mr. Buscaino?
Good morning, Mr. President. Item number 6, forthwith, please.
Item number 6, forthwith, Mr. Rue.
Item 9 is forthwith as well.
And I missed that item.
Number 9.
Item number 9.
And, Mr. President, the orders for Items number 4 through 9 will actually be held over until April 19th unless reconsidered with 12 members.
Okay, well, hopefully, we'll get there. Mr. Bonin.
Item 18, please.
18, forthwith. All right, let's go to the next. Yes, Mr. Weezer.
Item 7, forthwith, please.
Okay, we didn't get there yet, see? We need to reconsider.
I just wanted to be recorded as a no on 18. That's all.
Okay, we can do that because it doesn't change the outcome. All right, so we'll do that. Mr. Weezer.
But can I send it forthwith? 18, after we record him as a no, can we send 18 forthwith?
So we'll go forthwith, and he has been recorded as a no. Mr. Weezer.
Item 7, forthwith, please.
7, forthwith. Any more forth? Going once? All right, let's move on to the next section.
Items 19 through 30 are items for which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before this body. Do we have cards?
Yes, there are cards on Item 19, 20, 23, 24, 25, 26, 28, 29, and 30.
Okay, let's hold those items. Let's vote on the remaining items. So if you please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Now, we're at 12, Madam Clerk. So why don't you identify the items we need to reconsider?
For reconsideration, Items 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 9.
Okay, so our first vote is for reconsideration on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, now, we'll vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
Okay, that brings us where?
And for the record, Mr. President, on Items 6, 7, 8, and 9, there were requests to send those items forthwith.
Okay, so without objection, so ordered.
And that takes counsel to the continuation agenda. Item 31 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. There is a request to continue this item to May 2nd.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. Continue.
And, Mr. President, that takes counsel back to presentations. Item calls special or general public comment?
Okay. Okay, before we start the presentations, I want to go to the multiple comments section of our agenda. So if I could get Mr. Previn to come forward. If you could give me the cards that Mr. Previn has signed up to speak on. Mr. Walsh, if you could make your way. And, Mr. Previn, your items are 1A, C, D, E, F, K. Items 2, 3, 19, 20, 23, 24, 25, 28, 29, and 38. Okay, Mr. Previn, you get your 3 minutes and then your 1 minute. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. It is Eric Previn from CD2. Do we not get to hear the presentations today, those of us in the multiple section? So be it. Item 25 is the judgment obligation bond item that we have now continued from March 8th to March 24th to March 31st, and now to stately April 3rd. So the question that everybody is wondering, and I think Jack Humphreyville wrote in City Watch just last night, an interesting article about Mr. Galpern's raising the red flag about, is it fiscally responsible? He was joining forces there with Mr. Englander, who's been opposed to this. It's important to understand that we've already embraced two sets of judgment obligation bonds, and there's been a little bit of backroom finagling. So it looks like we may be able to hold off entirely, but we've already embraced some, at least if the CAO is correct. And I think that the CAO, who is getting his legs, Richard Llewellyn, certainly has his legs because he's been working at the mayor's side for five years. So this is a liability check. Are we, in fact, fixing any of these problems, or are we simply rolling forward with a off-balance-sheet payday for the bond guys, an upcharge for the folks? It's not what we want, obviously. We're very upset. Item 24, the Board of Commissioners for Department of Public Water and Power, I believe, are signing a contract with Network Television Time. Now, Network Television Time is known to some who watch the County Board of Supervisors closely. They need to improve their game, quite frankly. They have a system that is not accessible online at all. You have to download a program, and then when you do and pay 10 bucks, it doesn't work. So I would just ask that you scrutinize before you sign with Network Television Time. They're nice folks, but they may have been out of step, or the County Board of Supervisors leaving them in the lurch to disengage people. 27, a reward horrible crime. Monkeys Harris Dawson stepping up.
Item 27 has already been voted on?
I'm sorry?
Item 27 has already been voted on.
Oh, I'm sorry. I just want to acknowledge that we're sending 18 through to the air times. Fine, I'll move on.
Mr. Previn, come on.
No, Mr. Previn loves number 19 and 20 as well. Thanks to Mr. Ofero, who is honoring Wolfgang Puck and Gary Sinise. This is the kind of business that we're accustomed to. And Item 23, Rehrig, R-E-H-R-I-G. These are the folks with the blue and the black bags, not bags, bins, that the machine comes and takes your stuff. This is a 200 and something million-dollar contract. We're increasing it by 24 million. I would just simply request that my broken containers be replaced if we're going to go for such a robust extension. And I assume this also has to do with our financial problems, so kudos to Krikorian for getting that squared away. Finally, I guess we have to say something, at least something, about Mr. Rue's work up at the Hollywood sign. He's got a couple of things going on there. One, last week, we heard he was, well, this week, what he's doing is he's putting on Franklin, just below all that, a liquor store into public necessity. How are we going to cite people up on the hill where they're bothering residents if they don't have their booze? So we're getting a liquor store right there at the supermarket. Thank you. Thank you for that, sir. That is a nice little way to sort of slip it in on a day like today. And that's over on Franklin. And Item number 28, if I'm not mistaken, we're moving the meeting from the 7th to the 21st. So this, like today's police commission meeting, will be an excellent fake-out on residents. But make a mental note, the 21st, April 21st, those who follow.
Okay, just give him his 1 minute.
Sure. With 1 minute, this is exhausting for residents and for Mr. Previn, but I will simply say that Vision Zero is currently being unmasked. There was a major rollout over the weekend for these numbers that allege that we've got all sorts of increased road problems that need to be addressed by taking Mr. Bonin's idea, the pothole money, and directing it to Vision Zero, which is a program that is now being unmasked as a citation attack on residents. It looks very good because visualizing zero road deaths is obviously something that we all, every single one of us, wants to do. But the question is, are we really getting there? Are we going where New York City went, which is an uptick of 67% in traffic citations? They are just deriving revenue out of people, and they're not saving lives. So this is why I would ask you to take a real strong look, those of you who are conflicted, those of you who have been listening, those of you who understand your job is to make it safe, like in Sweden, not to take a safety mechanism and follow it into a attack on poor folks. And by the way, the potholes, if a poor person's car hits a pothole, it's costly.
Thank you. Thank you. So if you could pull up Mr. Walsh on my screen. Mr. Walsh, you have Items 1AJ3, 19, 20, 3, 26. Go ahead, sir.
John Moss, Bonin at HollywoodHighlands.org. Number 1, or tweeting at Hollywood Dems. Number 1, this is Building and Safety. Again, you do a good job. When you do a good job, I don't care if I see all a bunch of crooks. I say you do a good job. I'm not, you know, I'm retired. I worked for the government for a quarter of a century, and no complaints. Number 23, when you go to number 23, what you find is automated refuse and recycling containers. This is $24 million. This city is in bankruptcy. I hope my fellow friends, my compatriots in Switzerland where I come from, I hope they know that this city is in bankruptcy. Vive la France, vive Paris. Hold it in France. Don't hold it here. The city is in bankruptcy. It was in The Times yesterday. Number 25, number 24, this is website, number 25. This is, okay, this is judgment obligation bonds. You have, sitting in front of you, over $200 million, correct me if I'm wrong, in judgments about to be made by you in the next six months. $200 million. You can destroy my credibility by saying John Moss is out of his mind, say we don't owe -- and you're now bonding against that. It was in The Times. Bonding against that. Bonds, bonds, bonds. This city is an absolute 100% bankruptcy, triple-gauge bankruptcy. And number 26 is, this is a lien from Building and Safety. $2 million. You know, $2.5 million here, $2.5 million there. After a while, it begins to add up. And never any discussion of bankruptcy here, because you know what happens if the Olympics picks this city? The Olympic Committee sends $1 billion to the city? No, to the committee. And the committee spends it any goddamn way they want to. So they'll do anything other than beheading a small child up here to get the Olympics. Anything. Maybe that, we'll see.
Okay.
Now, I'm going into my minutes.
Okay, let's give him his 1 minute. Now you can say whatever it is you want to say.
Okay, take a look at the monitors. They used to have captioning for the deaf and hard of hearing. They've removed that. If you are deaf and you are hard of hearing, don't come to these meetings because you won't be able to hear. You were previously, and I'm lying, point to the captioning on these monitors. It isn't happening. They don't give a shit whether you live or die, and they'll prove that by not saying as long as they're, them, and their mothers aren't deaf or hard of hearing. And we're talking about other things. Sadio, we want him to, he's running against the LA Times. We want him to win. And HollywoodHighlands.org, there's a lot of stuff up there, a lot of information. Come check out the things you don't hear here. I said they were going bankrupt, now they say they're going bankrupt.
Thank you. We're going to vote now on Items 2 and 3. Let's, on Items 2 and 3, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
18, 20, and 23, and 24, so let's prepare to vote on those items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Oh, before we continue to vote, Madam City Attorney, that concludes our multiple-section general comment, so I'm going to close that. All right? Okay, we're going to now vote on Items 26 through 30. On those items, let's open the roll, close the roll. Let's scratch that. Mr. Englander.
On 25, can you take it out of order?
25 is not, we're not going to vote on 25 at this time. So this is 26.
I thought you just said 20 through 30.
26.
26, okay.
Okay, so let's try it again.
I heard it wrong.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, so on 28, urgent forthwith, we need another vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
So why don't I, Mr. Krikorian, would you like to begin the presentation portion?
I'd be happy to, sir.
Okay, so the floor is Mr. Krikorian's.
Well, thank you, Mr. President, and members, good morning. It's a great pleasure for me to come before you today to honor and celebrate one of the most ancient cultures in world history. My son is in the 6th grade now, and we've been studying ancient civilizations, and it's a special treat for me to be able to work with him in studying the great contributions of the Assyrian community to world history, and then also to represent the Assyrian-American Association that has its headquarters in North Hollywood in my district. The Assyrian people have left a long and important legacy to the rest of the world. The Assyrians are responsible for things like the wheel, canals, the arch, things that are pretty fundamental to almost every other culture in Western civilization. that are pretty fundamental to almost every other culture in Western civilization. And they are one of the most ancient cultures that continues to thrive and survive to this day. And today, we are celebrating here in council one of the most revered and ancient traditions of the Assyrian people. The Assyrian New Year, known as Chab Nisan, which symbolizes a time of rebirth, renewal, and prosperity. This is a time-honored tradition that dates back almost 7,000 years, and which serves as a testament to the great resilience and perseverance of the Assyrian people. There's a 12-day festival for New Year, known as Akitu. It's a celebration of spring and rebirth, and now more than ever for the Assyrian people and so many other people in the Mesopotamian and Middle Eastern area. Celebrating rebirth and renewal and revival is especially poignant as we look at some of the dark clouds that pass over Syria and Iraq and other places where the Assyrian people have their roots. And yet, in the best of times and the worst of times throughout that 7,000-year history, Assyrian-Americans have proudly celebrated their New Year and their heritage, their ancient heritage, which is so important to the rest of the world as well. So I'd like to introduce you to the Assyrian-American Association, which was founded in 1964. The association tirelessly advances the interests of the Assyrian-American community in a wide array of areas, preserving the community's cultural and linguistic identity, engaging in public outreach and governmental advocacy, education, arts and literature, youth services, and much more. And so I'd like to introduce you to the President of the Assyrian-American Association, Raymond Taks.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank Councilmember Krikorian in the Los Angeles City Council for the recognition of our New Year, an ancient custom that stretches over thousands of years. In many ways, this is also recognition of our people, that the Assyrian people, who have been an integral part of the fabric of this city for over 100 years, some of the first Assyrians arrived here around the turn of the 19th, 20th century. This time of year, people, our people gather together to celebrate renewal and rebirth, as the council member said. It is a time of celebration, thankfulness, and renewed hope for future prosperity. Our people are good people. We have a long storied history that has experienced the best of times, as the council member articulated, and unfortunately, the worst of times. As one of the indigenous peoples of the Middle East, we've experienced our fair share of the worst of times, from the genocide of 1915 to the current ethnic and cultural cleansing in Iraq and Syria. However, it is incumbent upon our community more than ever before to honor, preserve, and celebrate our cultural customs like our New Year, and to expand on cross-community and public outreach. Indeed, they may knock us down, but we get right back and we sound proud as Assyrians. This proclamation from this wonderful city is a great step. I can't tell you how much our community here feels about this wonderful proclamation, not just here, but throughout Los Angeles and Orange County, as well as the entire country. Thank you all, and we look forward to working and collaborating with all of you for the betterment of all the people of Los Angeles. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Raymond. And in celebration of that spirit of renewal that we all share with the Assyrian-American community, and in honor of your contributions to Los Angeles and the United States, I'd like to present you with this resolution signed by every member of the city council, and wish you a Happy New Year and congratulations.
Thank you so much, Councilman.
I have a big group with me, Mr. President. I'd like to ask that they all, everybody come around and.
You just had half the chamber stand up.
You got it. See, that's the way I travel, okay? I have a, a big entourage. Just squeeze in and make some room. Before I begin the presentation today, I would like to recognize a very, very important person is with us today, an individual who has spent a lifetime, really, as a public servant, but an individual that was the president or the chair of the Board of Public Works, my dear friend, and one of my mentors, and that is to my left, Maureen Kendall. Let's give her a round of applause. Any day that you're back in City Hall is a special day. And also, the program I'm going to spend a moment chatting about, Maureen Kendall is the founder of the Education Success Project. Now, members, what, you know, we have very important professions throughout the world, and I would imagine that each and every one of us would agree that nothing is more important than being an educator. Nothing is more important than preparing our youth of today to be the leaders of tomorrow. So what we have here is an exchange program from our own Loyola Marymount University and Queen's University in Belfast. And Norman, if I mess up, just pull on my jacket and whisper the right answer. And Queen's University in Belfast. And you know, with the world, the world is shrinking now with technology and what have you, so it's very important, I believe, that educators, professors, that teachers do everything that they can to really be on the top of their game, so that they can do the best that they can to educate the young people that are going to come and be the leaders of tomorrow. So I want to just acknowledge the lead person of this delegation, and that would be Norman Houston, the Director of the Northern Ireland Bureau in Washington, DC. Let's give Norman a round of applause. And in my notes, in my notes, it said that he had been a civil servant for so many years. And Norman, I want you to know, I kept saying secret agent, so you are, you are the 007 of the teacher exchange program, and you are welcome to Los Angeles. But I just want to take a quick moment and present to you, all of the people that you see behind me are part of this program. They're bringing a little bit of their country here, exchanging all of that with our educators. But let's meet them, so if I could get you guys to just come up, state your name and what you teach.
Okay, Professor Tony Gallagher from Queen's University Belfast, and helped to manage and lead the program.
Just keep it, I want everybody.
Hello, I'm Heather Watson. I'm principal of a primary school in Northern Ireland, an integrated primary school. It's a pleasure to be here.
Rita Moore, Vice Principal, St. Mary's Limavari.
Hello, Anne Williamson, Principal of Ballycastle High School in Northern Ireland. Thank you for hosting us today.
My Lindsay, Principal of St. Mary's College in Derry, but I live in Donegal, and I'm delighted to be with you.
Jennifer Little, and I'm the Principal of Moy Regional Primary School.
It is wrong, but just keep checking.
Martine Monahan, Principal of St. Cecilia's College in Derry.
My name is Paul McLean, and Principal of Cross and Passion College in Ballycastle on the north coast of Ireland, and thank you very much for having us.
Craig Johnston, Special Education Teacher.
Good morning, I'm Gavin Duffy. I'm a research fellow at Queen's University Belfast.
Hello, everyone, my name is Gareth Robinson, and I'm also a research fellow from Queen's University in Belfast.
Good morning, Diane Morning, Principal of Limavari High School.
See you at the last best. I'm John Capadoc, Principal of St. John's Primary School, my.
Let's give them a big round of applause. If I had an accent, I really wish I could sound like you guys, but it is my honor, if I, you know, Norman, why don't you say a word before I present you with the certificate from the City of Los Angeles, let's give a round of applause for Norman Houston.
Mr. President, distinguished members of LA City Council, my name is Norman Houston. I am Northern Ireland's diplomatic representative to the United States. It's a great honor to be here this morning to support educationalists from Northern Ireland. Northern Ireland is a very small region. We have only about 1.8 million people, and we're roughly the size of Connecticut, but we have a very large reputation around the world, most recently due to our peace agreement and the strides we have made to build an integrated community. Nothing is more important in Northern Ireland than the education of our young people, the opportunity to be educated together and to travel widely and to be more accepted of other people. This initiative with LA City Council, particularly through Dr. Kendall and Dr. Victoria Graff, has been a wonderful opportunity for me. I met both professors five years ago when we first embarked on this project, and I think this visit this week by educationalists from Northern Ireland, led by the distinguished academic Dr. Tony Gallagher, is testament to the support that the people of LA have given to Northern Ireland. So on behalf of my government, thank you very much for your continued support for peace reconciliation and economic development in Northern Ireland. Thank you.
Norman, give them a big round of applause. Norman, I'd like to present you with the certificate from the City of Los Angeles. Where are you?
I'm here, behind you.
And I won't, it says a lot of wonderful things, I guarantee you that, signed by every member of every one of my colleagues, and we really appreciate all of the good work that you've done, the good work you're going to do in the future. Plus, it also says that the President of the Council always honors individuals that he can see eye to eye with.
Nice. Another round, another round of applause, absolutely, thank you.
And one more for the program. And so this is for the Queen's University, and so I'll need a designated carrier on this. You're tall enough, fellow, I give that to you. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give our guest a round of applause. Thank you for your service, and thank you so very much for coming to, coming to Los Angeles. Mr. President, back to you.
Great, thank you very much. Yes, Councilmember Sadio, are you ready for your presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right, the floor is yours.
Oh, my brother. Legacy 660, they call it now.
Is that what they call it now?
Yeah.
Some kid asked me, and I said, I want 660.
What's that? Oh, man.
That's it.
Trying to hear? Yes, sir, please. You have such a glorious tongue. You need something.
I'm not a hero here, so this hero I have to show up here. We jump down together.
82nd Airborne? 82nd, 173rd. Oh, all the way.
We have a patient together in that room, we jumped together.
Members, Mr. President, I cannot tell you how honored I am to be here this morning. You know my story. My father came to the city in 1941, left to be a part of the 82nd Airborne, participated and was prepared to, for combat for the Korean-American War. That commitment to democracy was repaid during the Vietnam War, when veterans honorably upheld the highest ideals. For whatever you may have thought of our conflict and our participation in Vietnam, you can never doubt the commitment and the courage of veterans and their commitment to our democracy throughout the world, and in this instance, in Vietnam. There were 325,000 Korean soldiers who served in Vietnam from 1964 until the last soldiers left on March 23rd, 1973. The Koreans were the largest unit sent by Allies to join us in Vietnam. 5,000 were killed, 10, oh, let me correct that, 5,099 lives were lost, and 10,962, because each life is valuable, were injured, and it's estimated that 20% of Korean veterans suffered from significant injuries, including the PTSD, the total disability and effects of the toxic, defoliant Agent Orange. And you heard the story of my cousin who passed recently and was challenged by all of these maladies. In the City of Los Angeles, there's over 2,000 Korean veterans of the Vietnam War, and they reside here in the city, and of which 300 have also served in our US Armed Services. And so it's a great honor to be here today with some of our veterans, including the members of the American Legion Los Angeles Chinatown Post 628 from the 1st Council District. It's a great honor and privilege to be here to speak on behalf of these men. They remain committed to our values and to our vision. They are vital, they are engaged civically. And before I go on, I'm joined by this young man to my left, who has joined us and has a few words to say, Councilmember David Riew.
Thank you, Councilmember Sadio, for welcoming this distinguished group of veterans to the City of Los Angeles. And I had the pleasure of meeting Wayne Yi and my good friends Alfred Chung and Tony Wong, and the many members of the American Legion Post 826 this past year. Their experiences and stories are remarkable and must be passed on for future generations. Today, we're joined by the many members of 826, and in particular, the Vietnam War veterans of, 628, sorry, 628, of the Korean, of the veterans of the Vietnam War. And the South Korean forces made up the second-largest foreign military contingent after the United States. And as Councilmember Sadio has stated, over 300,000 Korean troops were deployed and fought bravely. From 1964 to 1973, South Korean soldiers played a significant role in fighting communism in South Vietnam. Unfortunately, very little has been written about this topic. And while even growing up, I knew very little about Korea's participation in the war. Today's an important reminder that we must not forget history, nor can we forget the nearly over 5,000 Korean soldiers who gave up their life for this war. Los Angeles is home to the largest population of Koreans outside the Republic of Korea, and it is our duty to share these stories and experiences. I really want to thank Councilmember Sadio for providing the opportunity to honor and recognize these unsung heroes, and especially to all the veterans behind me, veterans who've served, who in the past, who have demonstrated extraordinary courage, compassion, and immense sacrifice without even seeking credit for your actions. Today, the City of Los Angeles honors the brave Korean veterans of the American Legion Post 628 for your sacrifices. Thank you.
As our colleague indicated, these men fought bravely, were known for their dedication and their tenacity, their effectiveness in the battlefield. And so I'm here and proud to recognize the significant accomplishments of our nation's Korean veterans and confirm our city's commitment to preserving their memory and their history. As my colleague has said, it is important for us to account for and acknowledge and remember the history of those who have contributed to our way of life, so that we may not forget and we may not repeat the errors of the past. It's with great honor, great humility, and a great privilege that I introduce to you Mr. Wayne Yi from American Legion Post 628. Are you Wayne?
Good morning, City Council. It is a pleasure to be here, and it is an honor that Mr. Gil Sadio and Mr. David Rue is here with us to recognize our Korean comrades. Korea was liberated. Korea was liberated after World War II from Japan, and was administered by the United States until 1948, when they received their independence. Seventeen years later, 1965, they were the first to heed the call of the United States to stop the aggression of communism. And today, they are still here, staunch allies of the United States, to uphold the Constitution that we believe in. I thank you. I don't know much more to say, because everything that I have thought about and that I have learned has already been said, and I don't want to be redundant. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you all.
On behalf of a grateful city and a grateful nation, we give you this commendation as a token of our appreciation for the great contributions of the Korean-Americans.
Thank you, sir.
Veterans.
All right, let's give them a big round of applause, another round of applause. Thank you very much. That truly was a special presentation. All right, colleagues, we're going to go ahead and turn our attention back to the agenda and go to item one, and we have one card on item 1H. Mr. Mark Barton, Mark, come on up.
And Mr. President, as the speaker comes forward, I'll request to continue 1D and 1K to May 2.
Okay, 1D and 1K to May 2, without objection, that'll be the order. Mr. Barton, thank you very much. The floor is yours.
Okay. All right. I'm here on 9128 North Vena. This is the first time that this was received. This is about a garage, a garage conversion. A property owner have a garage conversion, neighbor call and complain, they didn't get this bill. Now, the bill is for $2,200, and building on safety, wants to put a lien on the property because a garage conversion was billed. The whole block have garage conversions. It's okay, because neighbors didn't call and complain, so they don't get this bill. Come on, you guys, this happened before, here we go again. Give me a break.
All right, and we'll go ahead and proceed on that as scheduled. So we'll go ahead and open the roll on item one. All right, close the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Great, that items, those are approved, thank you very much. Next item, please, item 25. Okay. Item 25, we'll go ahead and open it with Mr. Kokorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, there's been a lot of discussion of late about item 25, so I thought I'd put it into a little bit of a context for all of us. First of all, I think we probably universally agree that a judgment obligation bond is not a favored way to balance a budget or to overcome deficits. We all agree with that, and I think that's clear. It's not good budget policy to pursue judgment obligation bonds as a matter of ordinary course. So why then have we gotten to the point, why has this, has the Budget and Finance Committee recommended and the CAO recommended that we explore this option and prepare for it? I want to put that part into context for you. First of all, this year, we have seen liability overruns over budgeted amounts in the tens of millions of dollars. In the last two or three years, our liabilities have spiked well above historic trends, and this year was a significant overrun in the amount of at least $39 million. And as of yesterday, yesterday's Budget and Finance Committee meeting, we added another $10 million on to that of unbudgeted liability. So that is one of the reasons that it was important to pursue this. Second, we have, as you've seen in our FSRs over the course of the year, been projecting year-end deficits that have needed to be remedied. And in fact, in the second FSR, the city was looking at a projected deficit for this fiscal year of $81 million. As you all saw, there was an interim report prepared by former CAO Miguel Santana that also indicated that there could be an even higher potential deficit if certain things came to pass, estimated as high as almost a quarter of a billion dollars in this fiscal year. Now, all of that puts pressure on the reserve fund, which we have worked very hard in recent years to boost up to finally reach the city's financial policy goal of 5.0%. And this council has succeeded in doing that in fiscal year 2012, 2013 was the first year in anybody's memory where we actually achieved that goal and achieved a 5% reserve. In every single budget year since then, since 2012, we have begun the year with a reserve in excess of 5%. And that is a tremendous achievement on the part of this council and two mayors to get us to that point of fiscal integrity and fiscal sustainability. And it's important that we preserve that. That 5% reserve is what's going to help us to get through the inevitable next downturn. And if we don't maintain that reserve, we are vulnerable to the kinds of chaos that we suffered after 2008, and we're vulnerable to even the potential of credit downgrades if we continue to eat into that reserve, all of which has a real-world cost. I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm a little over, but if I could just continue on.
I'm watching the clock, and you're on a roll. This is all important, so it's all good. You're good, take your time.
So protecting that 5% level of the reserve has real value, and dropping below it has real risks that we have to take into account. So, that being said, the good news is, we're much better off now than we were at the time of the second FSR. A lot of the projections and risks that Mr. Santana had feared have not come to pass. A lot of budget work has been put into remedying some of the projected deficits since the second FSR, and I'm pleased to say that that projected deficit has come down considerably. So, the risk that we were facing when we started this process is not as great now. And so that gives me a lot more comfort moving forward than we had in mid-year. But, we still face tremendous uncertainty. And let me just remind you, we have a presidential administration that is threatening to cut off all funding to the city of Los Angeles and the state of California. We have a stock market that by everyone's account seems to be overheated and due for a downward correction, which has real impacts on the city of Los Angeles. There has been discussion, significant, meaningful discussion by our pension funds about changing and lowering their assumed rate of return. And if they do that, that will have an impact on our general fund in the potentially hundreds of millions of dollars, if they lower that assumed rate of return, which I think would be a disservice to current employees, to our constituents right now who deserve services if they were to do that. But that's not in our control. That's an uncertainty that we have no control over, whatever, it's decided entirely by the pension fund boards. And of course, we still continue to have the risk of volatile liabilities each and every year. As much as we've tried to bring those numbers down, as much as we focused on risk management, we still don't know. We never know, from year to year, what horrendous case might come upon us resulting in significant liability. So for all that reason, for all those reasons, we are better off, but we face significant risk and uncertainty in the coming fiscal year. So what I would like to recommend is, what's before you today is an instruction to the CAO to begin the process of preparing for the judgment obligation bond. But, I think it's important to note that before any such bond can be issued, the CAO will need to come back to this council with a contract with a financial institution to actually do the issuance. So we will have, in the natural order of things, a second opportunity to review this once some of these uncertainties and risks that I've described become a little bit clearer to us. So, I would like to propose that we move forward today, but we count, we count on not only that natural review of a potential contract, but we specifically instruct the CAO not to issue any judgment obligation bond before coming back to this council for further review and approval as we get into the fiscal year and see how things are looking. So, I would recommend not moving forward with issuance of a judgment obligation bond, but I would also recommend that we not take that option off the table. I think it would be foolish, frankly, to take that option off the table at a time when we still face so much uncertainty about where we might be in the coming fiscal year. As it stands now, I would not go forward with a judgment obligation bond, but conditions could worsen in coming months. And if they do, then I believe we need to have that option available to us in case we need it. So, for that reason, I would move that item 25 be amended, such that in addition to adopting the authorizing resolution and proceeding with the judicial validation process, the council instruct the CAO to report to council and seek authorization to proceed prior to issuing any judgment obligation bond debt.
Okay, we have four seconds, and, that was quick. It was like, one, two, three, not it, but just the opposite. Mr. Wesson seconds, Mr. O'Fell seconds, Mr. Bonden seconds, do we have a third second? Do we have a fourth second? We're looking for a fifth, looking for a sixth second? We have a, yes, Omar Quis. All right, so we've got a lot of seconds out there, and, well stated. Yes, I think there's some support for your motion. So with that, colleagues, oh, we've got Mr. Corretts, whose birthday was yesterday, by the way. Mr. Corretts.
Happy birthday. Thank you. Just one question, I think this all seems to have a good logic to it. How much does it cost, or is there much of a cost to the process of going through the process till we're about to actually take the final step?
Good morning. Benson, how at the city administrative officer. The cost of the actual process is, we're factoring to be under $100,000 to continue down this path before issuance. If you're asking about the cost of what the, like, the interest rates would be, we have assumptions based on a 5.5% interest rate, as indicated in the report, that the interest cost over the 10-year period would be approximately $20 million.
So the actual cost of the process, you said, is under $100,000?
It's under $100,000, and that's to pay for both financial advisors and legal consultation with regard to the validation process that we would be undertaking.
Well, I guess considering the amount of money we're talking about, under $100,000 is probably a modest amount to allow us to keep both our options open.
Okay, seeing no other speakers on the queue, just for clarity, Mr. Kokorian, on your motion, did you want that, do you want the item then coming directly back to council or to budget and finance first?
That's a good question, Mr. President. I think it would make more sense to stop in committee before we, so that we have an opportunity to give a full report to council before it comes back.
I assumed you meant that, so I just wanted clarification for the record. Okay, thank you very much, colleagues. We'll go ahead now and, seeing no other speakers, no other questions on the queue, please open the roll. Close the roll. And tabulate the vote.
13 ayes, 1 no.
Okay, that moves forward. Thank you very much. All right, next item, please.
That takes council to general public comment.
Okay, we have one card for general public comment. Omar Baldwin.
Good morning. Good morning, City Council. My name is Omar Baldwin, founder and CEO of Peace Please Nonprofit. We're in a startup stage right now. I don't know too much about nonprofit startup. My parents, you know, they were homeless, and they don't know too much about nonprofit startup. My father, he did start a construction company. He was in prison though, but he told me about all his stories about living on Scared Row. Him and my mom actually lived on Scared Row, so I'm committed to Measure H. Measure H is, you know, something beautiful, but, I mean, we really have to take sacrifices with Measure H, because I actually wrote a book before I even knew about Measure H to help end homelessness. I want to help end homelessness worldwide. So if we take sacrifices with Measure H, I'm thinking just purchase about a couple square miles of land. That'll be it. And I know Mark Ridley-Thomas, our supervisor, he went to Sacramento and seen loaves and fishes. I spent some time in Sacramento when I went to talk with my state legislators, and we should take example of loaves and fishes in Sacramento. We should get some land to, we need loaves and fishes in Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thanks for being here. Yes, fight on, thank you. And so with that, and I'd also like to recognize Mr. Kokorian's tie today, and fight on you. With that, colleagues, I believe that concludes the council. Do you have any motions for posting a referral?
Yes, we do.
Those are posted and referred from the city attorney? And colleagues, do we have any announcements? Seeing none, do we have any adjourning motions? I'm going to look to my right. Seeing none, looking to my left. Seeing none, no adjourning motions, then that concludes the agenda, that concludes this council meeting, and we are officially adjourned. All right, be safe out there, thank you.